Calling to audit the Monday, March 6th, 2017 regular meeting of the 36th Council of the City of Berkeley. Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Protem Baker.
Here.
Councilmember Blanchard. Councilmember Gravlin.
Here.
Councilmember Kadekko.
Here.
Councilmember Steadman.
Here.
Councilmember Terbre.
Here.
And Mayor O'Dwyer.
Here.
The first audit of business tonight is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Steadman.
Support.
Support by Councilmember Gravlin. Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll?
Gravlin?
Yes.
Kadekko?
Yes.
Steadman?
Yes.
Terbre?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. And now do we have Reverend Zach Dunlop with us tonight, who will lead us in the invocation. Please stand.
Good and loving God, thank you so much for who you are and what you do. For the opportunity to live and work in this amazing community called Berkeley, we give you thanks. As we discuss and deliberate and even disagree tonight, we pray that you would help us not to see each other as adversaries or enemies, but as sisters and brothers, as neighbors who together are pursuing the betterment of the City of Berkeley. You've blessed us in so many ways, help us to be a blessing to others. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now we come to the Citizens' Comments portion of tonight's meeting, when you may present your thoughts on issues that are not included on tonight's agenda. Councilmembers will not engage you in discussion. If your concern needs to be addressed by a member of city staff or the Department of the city, please sign your name on the sheet provided at the clerk's desk. You may speak on a specific agenda item when it is being considered. When an individual has completed their comments, we ask that you refrain from gestures of approval or disapproval, because that can be intimidating for some residents. When you come to the microphone, please state your name and city of residence. And I see the chief is ready to come to the microphone.
We have an awards presentation this evening. A few months ago, on Christmas morning, there was a house fire in a home on Sunny Knoll. Due to the courageous actions of the three people trapped inside, along with the quick response and aggressive attack by the officers from Berkeley and Huntington Woods, loss of life was avoided. Sergeant Corey Miller. In addition to his duties as a shift supervisor, Corey is also our Fire Marshal Investigator. Corey is asked to do this presentation personally.
Thank you, City Council, Mr. Mayor. It's my pleasure and honor to be before you to share this story. It's just a miraculous story. I'd like to introduce some officers that we're going to be recognizing tonight. Public Safety Officer Brian Smith from Berkeley, Public Safety Officer Justin Childrey from Berkeley, Public Safety Officer John Lenses from the City of Huntington Woods, and Sergeant Jason Jordan from the City of Huntington Woods Public Safety. Additionally, I'd like to special recognize a couple of our audience members. Bernadette Keith, her daughter Jennifer Kirby, and Jennifer's grand-- or Bernadette's grandson and Jennifer's son, Daniel. These three were in this house when the fire occurred. And as the story unfolds here, you're going to see how much of a tragedy it could have been, which was avoided. So as the chief indicated, December 25th, 2016, Christmas morning, sometime around 3:20, 3:22 a.m., Ms. Keith would have woken up in this house. She would have woke up to complete darkness, choking and blinding smoke. She could have ran out of the house. She could have removed herself from the house. But she stayed in this house to yell for her daughter and grandson that were sleeping upstairs. It's my belief as the investigator that had she not yelled up to them, that they may have been overcome by that smoke, due to the thick smoke that was in this house. Shortly after hearing the yells for them to wake up upstairs, they opened the second story door of the bedroom to the hallway, and they were immediately pushed back by superheated gases and smoke. They realized they could not escape through the house. At that time, Jennifer took her son, they went to a window on the second story, they removed the window. Luckily, there was a porch out there. They got on top of the roof of that porch and made the choice to jump some 12 feet to the ground barefoot. At which point Jennifer told her 12-year-old son to go someone's help. Had it not been for that son going to someone's help, knocking on doors in the barefoot in the snow, Christmas morning, to call 911, we wouldn't have got the call to get there so fast. All of these are links of a chain of events that any one of them that is not there would have had a drastic outcome that is different to this. Jennifer, while her son is going to call 911, she knows exactly where her mother's at, in her room. Now, if I can describe the back of the house where her bedroom window is, if I stand on the ground, the window sill is this tall to me. There's nothing to stand on other than by that particular window where the bedroom is, there just happens to be an air conditioner. Jennifer goes to the garage, gets a gardening tool, and begins to break out the window to try to rescue her own mother. You can imagine this is a traumatic event that they've got to go through to try to rescue each other. 911 gets called. We get a call from a neighbor who was alerted by Daniel at 3:24 a.m. Within 1 minute and 39 seconds of being on scene, or getting the call, we were on scene. When officers pulled up, our officers, Public Safety Officers from Berkeley and Huntington Woods, share the same radio channel. Huntington Woods Officers Lenses and Sergeant Jordan dispatched themselves to help, because that's often what we do. We just go to see if we can help get the scene set up. Four officers pull up, these four officers right here pull up at the same time, they realize that they can hear somebody yelling at the back of the house, they get alerted that there's somebody trapped in this house. This is seconds that has to make a decision, not minutes. Jason Jordan and Public Safety Officer Brian Smith go to the back window. Jason Jordan gets up on that air conditioner, finishes breaking out more of the glass, reaches in there, and makes a determination that he's got to go in. There's no time to get his personal protective gear on, his air pack on, he's got to make the rescue, he's got to make it now if it's going to happen. Without hesitation, he's assisted inside that window, he crawls into the window to try to make the rescue. He's overcome by smoke. He had to come back to this window two separate times to get breath of fresh air to make this rescue occur. At what point in time, he's able to successfully rescue the victim, who's unconscious, bring her to the window, hand her out to Public Safety Officer Brian Smith, who then removed her from the fire building? Public Safety Officer John Lenses goes over to the window, assists Sergeant Jordan back out of the window. His gear is caught up on the glass, he actually cut some of his gear up from crawling in and crawling out of this glass window. It's only a 32-inch wide window, there's not much room. Once they get out, Public Safety Officer Justin Childrey brought over life-saving equipment, and they, all four officers, began life-saving treatment to Ms. Bernadette Keith. It's my belief because of their actions of quick response, going into an environment that was untenable at best, and then successfully rescued her, that's why we're here today to recognize these officers. I talked about the chains of events there, and they're all an integral part. I can't recognize these officers without recognizing the family members as well. If Ms. Keith didn't wake up to that smoke and take on that heat and smoke, and I had the opportunity to investigate this fire, the damage in the hallway where she would have been yelling up to them was just intense. So she put herself in peril to rescue the two lives upstairs. Followed by that, the mother having to have her son and her jump from the second story to him going to call to someone's for help, to her to try to rescue her own mother, getting injuries herself, was miraculous. So all of these took place because of timing and a Christmas miracle. So, at this time, I'd like to recognize, if we could, first, I'd like to recognize the civilians. When we give a civilian award, the civilian award states that it's given with meritorious actions such as life-saving or assistance to an officer with disregard for the recipient's personal safety. I believe I've explained exactly they've done this. So at this time, I'd like to give a citizen award to Bernadette Keith.
Thank you.
To Jennifer Kirby, for acting without hesitation and attempt to rescue a fire victim despite facing personal danger, directly resulting in saving a life during a house fire. And Daniel Zizakowski, for his bravery in actions in summoning help to report a house fire, which resulted in saving the life. And now to the officers, who didn't know until just now that the fire victims would be in attendance tonight. So I wanted them to kind of meet each other in a special environment like this. The first award we're going to hand out is to Jason Jordan, Sergeant Jordan from the City of Huntington Woods Public Safety. Come on, Jason. Jason will be receiving the Departmental Honor Award from the City of Berkeley. The Departmental Honor Award is for outstanding performance of excellent nature when an officer performs a hazardous duty and the line of the officer is at risk of doing so. The act must be in such extraordinary nature, by engaging in the act, the officer is exposed to peril above and beyond the call of duty. For his courageous actions in disregarding his own life while assisting the Berkeley Public Safety Department at a house fire and going above and beyond the call of duty to save a life. And now, for the remaining three. These three are going to receive a life-saving award. So we have Officer Brian Smith from Berkeley Public Safety, Officer Justin Childrey from Berkeley Public Safety, and Officer John Lenses from Huntington Woods Public Safety. Further actions in service to the Berkeley Public Safety Department at a house fire, assisting with the rescue of a fire victim, providing life-saving treatment. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sergeant Miller. Well, thank you all very much. Life-saving awards are amazing. Thank you very much.
Yes, and what awards again?
It's absolutely incredible.
Incredible story. This is an incredible story of bravery and neighborliness, that our officers were able to work so diligently and so promptly to save lives is amazing, and to be joined by our neighbors in Huntington Woods in the effort. And your bravery for making it--
Yes, and I hope you'll get in my house soon so I can come back here again.
Well, we'd be happy to see you back again.
I miss my town.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you for having me.
Anybody else want to come to the microphone? This is a tough act to follow. Very good. Seeing no one, then we'll move along to the Consent Agenda. Ms. Boucher, would you please read the items on the Consent Agenda?
Approval of the Minutes, matter of approving the minutes of the regular 36th City Council meeting on Monday, February 6th, 2017. Warrant, matter of approving warrant number 1311.
Is there a motion to approve the Consent Agenda?
Motion to approve.
To approve by Councilmember Steadman?
Support.
Support by Councilmember Gravlin. Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll?
Kadekko?
Yes.
Steadman?
Yes.
Terbre?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes.
And Gravlin?
Now we move on to the regular agenda. Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number one?
recognitions presentations, matter of any recognitions or presentations from the Consent Agenda.
Seeing no additional recognitions, then we move on to item number two.
Resolution number R-0617, matter of recognizing Care Net Pregnancy Center, Berkeley, Detroit, as a nonprofit organization operating in the community for the purpose of obtaining charitable gaming license.
Is there a motion to approve R-0617?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Gravlin?
Support.
Support by Councilmember Steadman. Mr. Baumgarten?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. This is a new item for this body. Our city attorney is actually available to explain some of the reasons why this comes before you today. So, Mr. Sterren?
Yes, absolutely. Thank you, Matt. Council, this matter before you tonight is in connection with an application for a charitable gaming license. I believe the actual activity is going to take place outside of our community, and it's a fundraising affair for this particular charitable organization. The actual gaming license is applied for to the state of Michigan and is issued by the state of Michigan, but there is a requirement that there has to be recognition by the local governing body that it is a nonprofit charitable organization operating in the community. The statute doesn't say why that is, but it's always been my understanding that the requirement is because we are in a much better position as the local governing body than would be the state of Michigan to do the vetting for them and to be able to basically acknowledge and speak for, or verify rather, that an organization is what it says it is. It's truly recognized in the community, and therefore qualify and make them eligible for a gaming license. So that's the reason it's before you tonight, not to approve the actual gaming license, but rather to pass a resolution that we do recognize them as a nonprofit operating in our community.
Very good. Thank you. Are there any questions, discussion on this matter? They have met our requirements?
Yes, some rather detailed background requirements. I believe the city clerk notified the applicant, asked them to provide the information. It's my information, in fact, I saw the information, that they promptly complied with the request and provided everything that was requested from them, so it should all be before council as part of your information packet this evening.
Any additional discussion on this? Mayor Protem Baker?
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you for your overview of what it is we're discussing tonight and for your careful review of the materials. And just to confirm that if we were to take action tonight, we wouldn't be endorsing any, or going against whatever they do. We're just simply stating that they filled out the paperwork correctly.
Exactly. And we are not endorsing or opposing any particular cause or any particular activity. That is correct.
Thank you. Very good. Then, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on R-0617?
Steadman?
Yes.
Terbre?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Gravlin?
Yes.
Kadekko?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes.
And now, Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number three?
Motion number M-1217, matter of appointing Tricia Losi to the tree board with a term to expire July 1st, 2020.
Is there a motion to approve M-1217?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Gravlin?
Support.
Support by Mayor Protem Baker. Mr. Baumgarten?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our tree board currently has three vacancies. This would fill one of those items. Ms. Losi is an active resident, she comes to many of our council meetings. She's been a resident for 18 years at the City of Berkeley. In her application material, she spoke very highly of her concern for the mature trees and wanting to keep them as part of the aesthetics of our community. She would be appointed to a term, if approved, she'd be appointed to a term that would expire July 1st, 2020. And she has submitted all the materials for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any discussion on this appointment? Seeing none, then, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on M-1217?
Terbre?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Gravlin?
Yes.
Kadekko?
Yes.
Steadman?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes.
And now, Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number four?
Motion number M-1317, matter of authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with Hubble, Roth &amp; Clark Incorporated to provide topographical survey services for the City Hall property for an amount not to exceed $3,200, stipulated in its proposal. Money is to come from account number 101265818000.
Is there a motion to approve M-1317?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Mayor Protem Baker, with support by Councilmember Terbre. Mr. Baumgarten?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. This item comes to you in our continuing efforts to gather as much good information as we can about possible renovations that could make City Hall a more user-friendly area and also incorporate some community spaces. We need to actually look at the area around City Hall and get some of the topographical information gathered. This project is being spearheaded by our planning department, and Ms. Vanson is here to give you a little bit of information on it.
Good evening. Yes, so our, the architecture firm that the city council hired, Lord X. Sargent, is preparing plans, as Mr. Baumgarten said. A topographic survey does need to be completed, not only because it's a good idea, but also because our local ordinance requires it when it goes before site plan approval. So procuring a survey is not something that's a subcontractor type of thing, like the structural engineer for this project is. So this is a separate contract. The architect had sought out Midwestern Consulting, but again, our procurement procedures require us to seek additional proposals. So with the consultation of our public works director, we obviously consulted with Hubble, Roth &amp; Clark, and got prices from them, as well as OHM advisors, which used to be Orchard Hilton McLennan, and received three different prices. You have those enumerated, and so we are recommending Hubble, Roth &amp; Clark, because they are the low bid and meeting specs.
Very good. Any question or discussion on this? Councilmember Kadekko?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Ms. Vanson. I noticed there's a high, there's a medium, and there's a low bid. Did you find much difference in what they were offering for the--
No, it's the exact same. Midwestern Consulting, because they had talked with the architect, the architect had drawn up the specs and had provided us with Midwestern Consulting. I simply cut and pasted and emailed HRC and OHM and said, "Give me a price for this."
Thank you.
So it's exactly the same.
Anything else on this? Seeing none, then, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on M-1317?
Baker?
Yes.
Gravlin?
Yes.
Kadekko?
Yes.
Steadman?
Yes.
Terbre?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes.
And now, Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number five?
Motion number M-1417, matter of authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with SME to provide geotechnical evaluation services for the City Hall property for an amount not to exceed $4,000, stipulated in its proposal. Money is to come from account number 101265818000.
Is there a motion to approve M-1417?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Mayor Protem Baker?
Support.
Support by Councilmember Terbre. Mr. Baumgarten?
Mr. Mayor, as you'll notice, Ms. Vanson did not move from her position at the podium, so she is here to give you information on this item as well.
So this is geotechnical investigation, which involves soil borings and a soil analysis to make sure what's underneath City Hall will hold any of the pavement, any of the structures that may be proposed. We want to make sure that it's going to hold up, and so that is what they're going to do. And I have a very long list of exactly what they'll do with regard to laboratory tests. And I did ask Mr. Baumgarten if I should provide it to you in your packet, but I'm happy to enumerate all of it. You know, they're going to look at groundwater, they're going to look at site condition, they're going to do a seismic class, site class, in accordance with the Michigan Building Code. We're going to have quite a report. So we got three prices for the same process that I just explained, and we have OHM, SME, and Hubble, Roth &amp; Clark, and this time SME was the low bidder meeting specs. So I'm happy to describe exactly what all this is, but--
I think we can forego that.
Okay.
Mayor Protem Baker?
Thank you, Your Honor, and thank you for this and for both, and the prior item as well. More of a comment and then a quick timing question. The comment, again, is that by approving this and the prior one, we're not in any way actually going to break ground on anything. These are just due diligence to ensure that if and when we put a proposal together, we'd know that, as you mentioned, that it would be able to, the ground would be able to sustain the weight and all those kinds of things. So this is due diligence in terms of potentially designing a possible proposal.
Yes.
Perfect. And my timing question is approximately, how long do these types of studies take, and when do we anticipate receiving the materials?
I will let them know tomorrow, assuming that this one goes forward as well, and they will be able, I would think, within a month or six weeks. There is another item that's going to be coming before you. This one sounds really fun, too, hazardous material survey, so stay tuned.
I can't wait. Thank you.
Councilmember Gravlin?
I was just curious, is this mandated by ordinance as well, or is this something the architect requested?
This is something the architect requested. It's not mandated by local ordinance as far as topographic survey, but it is something that the architect's probably not going to seal the plans unless they know that the building's going to stand up.
Okay. Thank you.
Very good. Seeing no other discussion then on the matter, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on M-1417?
Gravlin?
Yes.
Kadekko?
Yes.
Steadman?
Yes.
Terbre?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes.
And now, Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number six?
Ordinance number 00117, matter of considering the first reading of an ordinance to amend Chapter 106 Streets, Sidewalks, and Other Public Places, Article 2, Obstructions, Section 106 through dash 37, Pedestrian Passage of the Berkeley City Code, to provide for pedestrian passage during construction. Set date certain March 20, 2017.
Is there a motion to approve Ordinance 0117?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Steadman?
Support.
Support by Mayor Protem, or Councilmember Terbre, Mr. Baumgarten?
Mr. Mayor, this has been an item that we've all received a lot of feedback on, so if you'll indulge me, I would like to go in a little bit more detail than we typically find for these types of things, but want to give some good information on how we got to this point today.
Very good.
Run around and do some things. While this is warming up, what you have in front of you today is, it's a draft of a proposal to, in order to do a better job of get to a point where we have better text in place for our ordinance that protects our pedestrian passageways. Specifically, this is addressing Chapter 106 Streets, Sidewalks, Other Public Places, Article 2 Obstructions, Section 106, 37, Pedestrian Passage. So starting off here, so we had a couple of goals in crafting this new ordinance text. We know that, just flatly speaking, our current text is not serving the needs of our residents and not adequately protecting our sidewalks and pedestrian pathways. So we had a couple of different goals on crafting the new ordinance that is being proposed in front of you today. First and foremost, reduce pedestrian hazards and accommodate those with limited mobility. Allow alternative pathways to avoid total sidewalk closures. Keep sidewalks open where there is no danger to pedestrians, and minimize number of total sidewalk closures in the length of a time allowed for such closures. So currently, the way that our ordinance reads right now is it does mandate five feet of sidewalk space should be kept open and clear for free passageways, but then it goes on to say, "If the building operations are such that free passage is impractical, a temporary plank sidewalk with substantial railings or sidewalk shelters shall be provided around such obstruction." This was adopted in 1981. The text is really more appropriate for what you would find, provisions you would find in a commercial district, not a residential one. So it's very narrow in what it allows and does not, again, serve our needs for a residential area. It only requires, and only really allows, one type of alternative sidewalk material to be used. There are other local communities that have the same text, but have chosen to disregard that provision, and they've allowed for different multiple alternatives. We're trying to codify that with the text that we have here in order to allow many different alternatives, and you'll see some of the pros and cons of each later in the presentation. But to get away from just having one allowable item and not enforcing that means we're in the violation of our own ordinance. We're trying to, that's another goal of us, is we're trying not to break our own ordinances wherever possible. wherever possible. And then, of course, the city has instead required sites to be closed to pedestrians, which is allowable under the state code. But again, this is no longer, this is no longer meeting our needs. In 1981, as you can imagine, we were not putting up near the construction numbers that we are today. So as we closed 2016, we had 42 permits issued for new residential construction. The year previous, I think we had something like 36. So the instances of sidewalks closing has just become far too frequent, and I think there's a way that we can do this better. I'll go through in a moment where we need, oh, actually, here we are. So what we need to approve, we need to improve where allowable sidewalk materials, whether it's gravel, asphalt, I got an email that somebody had found, suggested that we have builders use a rubberized surface or some ramps, whatever it is, as long as we can make sure it's safe, it's even, and has a non, how you doing, come on in, having fun, as long as it's a non-slip surface. Those are going to be two of our biggest issues, and there are pros and cons to each material. If you've ever tried to push a sidewalk, or if you've ever tried to push a stroller down a little gravel sidewalk, you know that those little pieces can get caught up in there. Likewise, asphalt, especially the coal patch, can become very soft, those on motorized devices, whether it's wheelchairs or some other form of powered assistance, on a hot day, asphalt, coal patch can become very soft, and they can sink and prone to tips and closures. Say, nothing's perfect. If it was perfect, we'd be mandating that one thing, but we're giving options and allowing it to be whatever we think is the best item for the time, as long as, again, it provides a safe alternative to a broken sidewalk. Next bullet point, we need to establish a duration of enclosure and, most importantly, enforce this duration. Right now, when a sidewalk closure is allowed, it is, unfortunately, it's given on generally an open-ended basis, so it's allowed to be closed up until a point where the building official sees that, you know, I think you could probably open it back up at this point. You've gotten drywall, or your last delivery has happened, or sometimes it's just, hey, you can actually pour concrete again, it's spring, go ahead and finish off that sidewalk. We need durations to this, it needs to be codified, or at least it needs to be written into our enforcement practices so that somebody knows, if I do have to close this, it is a temporary and is limited in scope. We think we can gain some real ground there. And last bullet point, we need to empower the building official to approve these alternate materials and alternate pathways before the permit is issued. So we need to know ahead of time how a builder intends to address these concerns. How do you intend to keep the pathways open? What materials do you intend to approve? Obviously, you know, if the guy says, "I got a great deal on a bunch of feathers," it's not going to work for us. We need, because it's not going to meet the needs and goals of our ordinance. So in this matter, we need to know what they're going to be doing ahead of time so that we can make sure it is perfect for the context and is giving the safest alternative possible. So these are areas that we need to improve on. Sometimes a closure is going to be required, but we want to keep that limited in scope. So the building official will require that a builder closes sites if underground utilities are being installed. This is actually, for those that live on a block where Consumers is working right now, this will be one of those instances. So they are going to be doing sidewalk closures to do installs there. If a new build is getting their sanitary, or their sewer laterals, or their water lines installed, there's really no way of getting around that. That's an open channel that has to be cut. Again, temporary, but that will require a closure. Likewise, when that hole is backfilled, there will be a period where that ground is just too soft to support a pathway. Really, it's too soft to support the weight of a human. So until that settles, and it's not as mushy, as we all know, Berkeley has a very high water table, and sometimes the soil takes a little bit of time to drain out, so that would be an instance where if it can't support a pathway, we can in good conscience allow a sidewalk to be open. Also, when the site is delivering, is expecting deliveries, during the early parts of a build, there are, there's going to be concrete, there's going to be two-by-fours, trusses, all the building materials that are needed to create a new home. During that period, it would be safer, as the traffic volumes are high, to not try to mix pedestrians with that action. And the last, when construction on a small site is active, so during the days or even into the evenings sometimes, if there's a lot going on, if the site's very busy, the building official would be able to say, "It's just too dangerous." When they're done at the end of the day, or when they get past this period of high activity, then we'll have to open it back up. But again, we want these to be very short and very temporary whenever possible. And he would have to say, "You can close it, but you can close it for this amount of days." Not, hopefully not months, hopefully not weeks, but you can close it for this amount of days until you get past this point. I think we can actually gain a lot of ground there. All these should be temporary in nature, they should be weighed against the size of the construction area, the amount of sidewalk affected, the anticipated pedestrian traffic. That's not just volumes, but also who the anticipated users of the sidewalk will be. Obviously, school routes need to be kept open as much as possible. There's a, if there's a build site going on any of our major streets, if it's abutting 11 Mile, if it's abutting Catalpa, Coolidge, any of those, those are two busiest streets to ask people to cross or walk out into what could be, you know, a pathway intended for vehicles. And of course, the potential conflict for vehicular traffic. So having all that, the first proposal that we bring to you today, and again, this is just the first reading, as you'll see the text, so we kept the first sentence unended because it really is the most important. "At least five feet of sidewalk space should be kept clean and clear for the free passage of pedestrians. In the event of construction, abutting or within the public right-of-way may affect a safe passage on or access to a sidewalk. The building official shall determine an alternative for pedestrians. Alternatives may include that the sidewalk be closed, remain accessible, or an alternative path be established and designated by proper signs and/or barricades. In making that determination, the building official will consider the nature, duration of construction, the size of the construction area, the amount of sidewalks affected, and the anticipated pedestrian traffic." So there's a lot in there, but again, when we're, there's limited times where that would go on, there is approvals that we want to put in, so you don't see those things appear in the text of the ordinance, which we could either, we're going to be basically putting that into our standard operating procedures, that would be more of a function of enforcement, but there is some cases where you do see that reflected in the ordinance text, and that'll be something that we can discuss as we move to that portion. So moving on from the text of the ordinance to the enforcement strategy, I actually took this picture today. So what you see here is a whole lot of no. So you've got a portage on that is partially obstructing a sidewalk. You've got building materials also partially obstructing a sidewalk. The build site is to a point where it doesn't meet any of the parameters that we discussed previously, so it's not, it's not still active in the sense that pedestrians are in danger. It is, utilities are in, basically, at this point, it is unnecessarily closed, but because it can't, doesn't have the temporary plank sidewalk in our current ordinance, the decision is made to keep it fenced off. Speaking of fenced off, that's a terrible fence, so that's not meeting our ordinance. So under the four items cited here, three of these are enforcement issues that we can address immediately. In fact, the letter's already gone out, but the fourth one that we're asking the city council to consider is allowing the, allowing the text to give the building official the leeway to enforce an alternative pathway materials through there. We think we can do a straight shot. If there was something blocking that way, we could discuss going around it, but still keeping a pathway clear. Likewise, as I talked about earlier, Consumers is in town doing work, and here's a couple of, this is actually a really good alternative, but they are breaking our current ordinance. So what Consumers is doing is they are blocking, they have the adequate fencing that we want, but this area here is actually a sheet metal plate. It meets the requirement of being solid, even, non-slick, but it's not a plank sidewalk. So this is a good situation, and it's better than a broken and uneven sidewalk, but still it is actually a violation of our current ordinance despite the fact that they are actually working to make a safe location. I don't know if you can see in the back here, but there are other planned sites along this route. So in theory, they would be backfilling with gravel to maintain the site when they move on from being active, and then when they have enough put together, they would actually come through with a concrete truck, or when the weather allows, they would come through with a concrete truck and restore the entirety of the pathway. Good idea, a viable strategy, but currently against our ordinance. So we need to really catch our ordinance up with what good and best practices are out there that would maintain active sites, or that would maintain active sidewalks. I think that's the last of what I have. So again, this is a first reading. There is, it's an item open for discussion. The council has many options available to them this evening as far as just discussing, tabling it, giving staff direction, having them rewrite something and bring it back to them. The ball is completely in the council's court.
Thank you. Now to the city council. Are there any comments from the members of the city council? Councilmember Terbrecht?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We've, like many residents, been looking at this issue, trying to figure out what the best solution is for the residents, for the city. And for me, anytime we have a situation like this, I try to boil it down to as practical as possible. For me, it's a little bit of a balancing act, but first and foremost is always to make sure that the safety of our residents is number one. As many of you know, I have three young children, and the thought of them, you know, having to go into the street because there's construction is a bit unnerving to me. I don't like them going across the street, directly across the street to my parents' house without me watching them, so I completely understand that, and it's something that I think we need to certainly address. The same goes if you're trying to, as the city manager mentioned, a stroller, or if you have a walker, or a cane, or a motorized scooter, any of those things, it's extremely cumbersome for residents to pass through a construction zone if it's blocked off and they can't go to the sidewalk and have to try to figure out another way to get through. So my mind, again, shifts to first, what's causing these problems, because we've seen it increase certainly over the past few years, and, you know, what can we do to fix it? Not surprising to anybody, a large number of our sidewalk closures right now are due to new construction of houses. Again, that's not all, as we just saw, but a large number. New construction, in my opinion, generally a good thing for the city, but does the new construction require sidewalks to be closed, as we heard? In some cases, yes. There probably is a time period where sidewalks do need to be impassable, and that is also for the safety. But where I have an issue is the duration, you know, how long? Is this a day? Is it a week? Is it a month? Is it three months? Is it six months? Is it 10 months? Is it a year? Because most of those numbers are unacceptable. And how are we notified? How do we know if there are going to be temporary closures? What does the process look like for temporary closure? Are they permitted, which I think they need to be somehow permitted? We need to know, and the city manager alluded to this, we need to know what's happening, how long it's expected to happen, and why it's happening. How much should one of these permits cost? Because there should be a cost associated with it, and that's something that we're going to need to discuss, and is that based on a duration? Is that based on the reason for it? But it's something that needs to be discussed. As the draft stands today, I personally, I don't like the ambiguity and the subjectivity in the situation because there's too much room for interpretation. And if you have that much room for interpretation, it generally leads to the law being applied differently in different situations, and I don't think that's what I would like to see as a resident, and like everybody else, I'd like to know what is happening, why it's happening, how long it's going to happen, when I can expect it to not happen any longer. And if that's, you know, up to somebody's discretion, I feel like that might not be in the best interest of everybody, the residents and the developers. What I'd really like to see is much more clear delineation in this ordinance. If the sidewalk has to be closed, again, potentially, temporarily, that's understandable. You need a permit? You need to make sure it's clearly blocked at both ends, needs to be a temporary alternative. If you don't get a permit, you get fined. It's as simple as that, just like anything else. And if you get a permit, how long is that permit applicable? You can't just keep aside with a temporary closure for an unknown duration. We have to have some limits, and we have to know what we're getting into here. And the length of time that it's closed should be commensurate with the job and the expectation, and those are things that we need to know, and that's where we need to lean on, know our building department to say, "Okay, if this is a new service hookup, what is the expectation? How long should that take? When can we expect temporary passage to be reopened?" And those are things that we need to have in place, and then those are things that I believe we need to enforce. For me, the bottom line comes down to what are we seeking to accomplish here? First, obviously, keeping our residents safe, and secondly, fostering responsible development in our city. I think we can accomplish both of those goals by being much more intentional in what we say and how we say it. We can say simply, you know, "Thank you for choosing to build in Berkeley, and part of being a responsible builder in Berkeley is keeping our sidewalks open whenever possible." But if they can't be open, you got to do X, Y, and Z to comply with our expectations. And in my mind, what will happen is developers will comply with our expectations, because Berkeley's a great place to build, and they want to be here as well. There's value for both, but I think at the same time, that gives us a degree of certainty, knowing what's happening, why it's happening, and when it's going to be over. Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor, I appreciate that. And city manager, thank you for the thoughtful presentation to kind of shed a little more insight into what can readily be considered, you know, an ambiguous paragraph there. Those are excellent comments to my colleague, I appreciate and agree with all of those. So I want to kind of build on that rather than just restate it, but I do, again, want to say how important the safety is for all of us, whether it's the youngest in the family or those in need of wheelchairs or anything in between. You know, that has to come first, right from complete streets and safe sidewalks and our desirable neighborhoods to our downtown areas as well. It's absolutely crucial. So I'm not in favor of this either, as it stands today, but from a process perspective, and you hinted at this earlier, so I'll open that door just a little bit. I am a big fan of work sessions as an opportunity to explore new topics and ways to really, you know, surface some additional ideas. With a work session, we'd have the opportunity to participate in the discussion rather than reacting to a formal proposal, and this feels like we're in the reaction camp here, and I'd like to help be involved in participating in it going forward. I think work sessions can accommodate that, I think, quite admirably. So if I kind of put my work session hat on for a second and just kind of go from there, I do think, again, having the right tools in place and having the right ability to enforce. So from a tools perspective, I agree with your comments in the onset that we should be more specific and more open in the ways in which folks can block the sidewalks. The picture of Consumers was compelling in that it appears as though they're trying to do the right thing, and what they've done here may actually be completely acceptable in other communities, but because of ours requiring the planks or something like that, we were in the unfortunate situation of needing to address that issue. So I think having a broader toolset and the ability to apply those tools is important. And to the enforcement side, I think we really need to find ways to step that up as well. I know that's more of a budget conversation, so when we get into the budget season and anything we can do between now and then to double the funding or something like that to get more enforcement out there so that we can ensure that, and I love the permit idea, if we can get some permits out there and then we can enforce those things, I think we'd see the exact right kind of behavior that we're looking for as people either choose to build or renovate in this great city of ours. Again, most of the other thoughts that I had jotted down during the presentation were already very eloquently covered, so I want to thank you for the opportunity to comment.
Thank you. Councilor Kadak?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Some of this may be repetitive because I wrote a lot of things down. Yesterday, I spent my Sunday going up and down many of the streets in Berkeley, from Webster to 11 Mile Road. Safety is number one, in my opinion. There's a lot of messy sites out there. I totally agree with you guys. And I want to thank everyone, pro and con, that sent emails and, you know, comments to me. Some of the questions I have are, there's a, one of the streets has two construction sites across the street from each other and a dumpster in the street. To me, that's unacceptable. There are sites that I went by that had dumpsters on the lawn between the house and the sidewalk, so it is doable. I feel that also there is one dumpster on the corner, on a corner where Webster is one of the streets, and that dumpster is... one of the streets, and that dumpster is on city property. I don't like seeing dumpsters on city property. Again, there's enough room. I've talked to a lot of people over the last 48, 72 hours about this. As far as code enforcement, I think, and I did bring it up to the city manager earlier today, about getting a code enforcer specifically for these sites, or at least upping the code enforcement to make sure. If I could spend my Sunday going up and down and hitting these sites, then it can be done throughout the week, as far as I'm concerned. Not just sidewalks being blocked, portages, dumpsters in the way of people walking. One site had two pieces of equipment, major pieces of equipment. They were between the house and the sidewalk. However, there was no cyclone fence, there was nothing around there. That concerns me. Because, you know, little kids, you know, someone said to me, oh, well, they could jump off your porch. Yeah, but my porch isn't as inviting as a big bulldozer sitting in the middle of someone's yard. Those things concern me. I have a question for the city manager and/or the attorney, if you know. You were, we were talking about builders, but like when Consumer Power does something like they're doing, do we have any say to them as to, no, you're in violation of our ordinance? You know, I understand they're doing their work, but, you know, is there any say that we have, or we can communicate to someone like Consumer Power?
We don't have any preapproval that I'm aware of right now. I think that actually those, the right-of-way permits like that are actually approved by the DPW. Does that sound correct, Mr. Darren?
Well, the right-of-way, the right-of-way permits, and certainly we don't tell them when or how to, you know, maintain or install their infrastructure, but in the process of doing so, they are subject to the same codes and rules and regulations that apply to everybody else.
Okay, thank you. Another question, and this happened to me about six years ago. They were building a house to the south of me. I now have cracks in my sidewalk that I'm going to have to pay for to get redone because someone else used my property, town load, their bulldozer, or their equipment. To me, that's unacceptable. I think that a work session is definitely the way to go. I've been talking about that over the weekend. I think if we have a work session, we can cross all the I's, cross all the T's, dot all the I's, and get the language done, not just for sidewalks, but for dumpsters, for any kind of obstruction. And again, if there is a dumpster in the street, which really concerns me, I have seen dumpsters in this city without reflectors. And you turn the corner, and you know, you're fortunate that you get to see that dumpster. So these are things that we have to concentrate on. I think language needs to be put together. And as far as the cyclone fence falling down, as I noticed, consumers had the metal poles that held it up better. Maybe that's one way to go. Or if need, a chain link fence around the area that's being worked. But again, we need safety as our number one concern. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Anyone else on the council? Councilor Gravelin.
I also support a work session idea to further flesh this out. There's a lot of different pieces we've discussed at length here. I would also like to touch on the communication aspect. A lot of it's just confusing, both to the builders, who may not necessarily understand what they are and are not allowed to do, but to residents. If you go by a site, how do you know if the city is even aware of the violation unless you're specifically calling or emailing? There needs to be some onsite signage that we should be involved with developing so we know what has been addressed, what they're aware of, what's been permitted, what's not permitted, how long they have to comply and bring it up to speed. That's an important part of the safety piece as well. And when it does have to be blocked, not just blocked at the site, but where the available safe crossings are, there's a sign to notify, cross here, sidewalk blocked ahead. We have nothing of that sort now. So for with my five kids meandering around town, yeah, I'd like them to know, hey, get over. So that would be the other important piece I would like to further flesh out before we make absolute decisions.
Thank you. That strikes a good thought. Thank you for that as well. When I think about, I was in DC last week, and there's a lot of construction going on there as well. And one of the things they had at each of the job sites was a big board with posted, you know, the permits. It had the timing and schedules. It had who to contact for any issues or questions. It had, you know, the actual permits and things like that. So there was very clear visibility as to what was going on, the fact that the city knew about it, who to contact if there was any issues or questions, those types of things. And the lack of such a sign would clearly indicate that the proper process wasn't being followed. So that kind of proactive communication and visibility, I think, would be very helpful.
Councilor Stedman.
I don't think there's anything else I can add. Everybody's covered everything really well. And thank you for your presentation and that. But I do think we need a work session. I think there's too many little things that are out there that we haven't really looked at. There wasn't time to look at, and so on. So I think a work session would be good, where we can, you know, take everything, all of these ideas and so on, and some of the ideas that we've had from the residents, and put them together.
Thank you. Again, I won't repeat what has been said so eloquently by my colleagues, but there are a couple of little additional points. In the event that the sidewalk is closed, and it becomes necessary for that period of time to reroute that path around the construction, there should be no parking allowed right there for the very first thing. It absolutely makes no sense to me that people can park big things and now puts the children out in the middle of the street. So with regard to just that little specific point, if we are making a little loop around a broken sidewalk, we can put a little fence around, you can, we see them everywhere, these plastic type triangular things that sit down. Why can't we put one of those around and so the children can go in between those and pick up again? For example, but they'll be in the middle of the street if we have parking. So that would be another little piece that I would add into the equation when it looks like we're going to have this on a work session. And that's fine. That's fine. But that would be one thing for me. Second thing for me is if you're going to close a sidewalk, that costs the city, the residents, we're all taxpayers, and now we can't walk on our own tax-paid sidewalk. Therefore, it seems to me that a permit should cost money, and it will incentivize a builder to hurry up and not have it, you know, obstructed for too long. Now, I don't know exactly what that cost should be, and there we're back to, you know, a session to talk about those things. But I feel there are a couple of things that immediately come to mind. So you use the expression, Mayor Protam Baker, "tools and enforcement." The tools are the rules. There needs to be rules. I just read this, and I kind of felt if I was a builder, I could cut roads through that, because it's too vague. And so I feel that we need to tighten up the rules, the tools. And then the next piece is the enforcement piece, because all the rules in the world that aren't enforced get you nowhere. So there are my overall general thoughts, without repeating all that has been said.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Real quick, just like we do in commercial businesses, can we put a, beside the fine, but can we put a stop-work order if they're not doing what we ask them to, the builders?
Yeah, that's an option available to us.
Okay, let's, go ahead.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just one last thought, it just occurred, you know, the concept of, I'm glad that the notion of a work session is informative so that we can wrestle through this, we can hear more from the residents on this as well, get some of the builders in here potentially. But in the meanwhile, we do have construction going on today. And so, not to drift too far off topic, but I'd like to help encourage and ensure that we can continue to identify and enforce today's issues today while we're working on the new rules and tools for tomorrow. So I just wanted to ask that request as well.
Yes, we are, we are working to be, step up our enforcement of those issues. Coming out of the winter and into the spring construction season, we are stepping up enforcement. I will be, as a couple of the council members stated, they'd like to see more enforcement. I will be working through the budget process to get a proposal that would hopefully meet your approval. So, but yes, the key word is stepped up, the key words, key phrase, stepped up enforcement here.
Thank you. Very good. Ms. Spoucher, who made that motion?
I did.
You did. Councilor Stedman. So would it be a friendly amendment then you'd be willing to make?
Yes.
To make it a closed session?
Yes.
And the session?
A closed session.
I meant work session. I meant work session. And who, very good. So the maker of the motion and the second agrees that it goes to a work session. Now we're still ready to listen to the audience.
Thank you. My name is Dennis Henon. I live on Ermont here in Berkeley, speaking tonight on behalf of Berkeley Citizens United. I am very encouraged by the things I heard from the city council and that you're going to take a step back and more carefully consider this. I had a lot of material prepared that you've preempted now with this decision, which makes me pleased. I think this is the right direction. I do want to make one recommendation when the work session, that we don't rely entirely on the internal staff. The staff that have brought this before you today are the ones that have been advocating, some of them very strongly, to keep our sidewalks closed, sometimes for long duration. And we know other communities, for example, Patty Curtis is here tonight. She's a resident of Berkeley, but also a code enforcement officer in Birmingham, and knows firsthand the types of materials, the types of things, the types of processes that can be used to keep the sidewalks open safely for only very short-duration closings. And so I would encourage you to get an outside perspective so that you can go in and make your decisions fully informed. But thank you for essentially tabling this tonight, and I'm encouraged with what I've heard. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Rachel Piesantini. I live on Oxford. Mr. Kadek, is this the street you're talking about that has two blocked sidewalks right across from each other?
Yes.
This is a problem. I'm glad you guys all recognize it. Let me just show the audience. This is a problem. So actually, I'm actually thrilled, seriously thrilled, that you guys actually recognize that this is a problem. We just want our sidewalks. I get it, they're going to build, that's fine, great, perfect. It does wonderful things for our housing stock. I just want to be able to use the sidewalk. And I'll tell you what, this is very passionate to me because you tell me how much a child's life is worth. Because when I was a child, I rode around the block, and when my parents said, don't go in the street, I rode my big wheel in the street to go around a blocked sidewalk. And when you have this, and you have the cars parked up and down the street, that unknowing child will do that, and those cars won't see them come down the street. And we all know the high schoolers cruise around pretty fast. I did it, we all did it, right? So I just want you to take that into consideration when you guys have your work session. But I do appreciate everything you've said so far. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Patty Curtis. I live in Berkeley. I work for the city of Birmingham for code enforcement. Thank you so much for your observations. I'm so pleasantly surprised. There were a couple of things I wanted to clarify. Our current ordinance says in the event that the sidewalk cannot be made passable, then it requires the plank. I think the whole point is being missed, that the existing sidewalk can be made passable. We don't only have two alternatives, close the sidewalk and put up a plank or have a regular sidewalk. There are materials that can be used and are used in Huntington Woods, in Birmingham, and other local communities. And as you know, I sent you all an email showing that the citizens of Royal Oak are having the very same complaints that we are. The sidewalks can be passable without making a separate alternative path. The resistance here has been really from the building department. I'm not here to slam anybody, but I did speak to our building inspector directly over this, and he insisted to me that he absolutely wants closed sidewalks. And that is problematic, and I think you need to recognize that. That's why I support Mr. Henon's comments that we bring in consultants from other areas rather than just our internal staff, because there are options that our city has not explored. Our building inspector told me that, I said, well, what would be your alternative? I just don't want people near the build sites. I said, you can make them safe so they can still use the sidewalks that are in place with alternative materials right over them. Numerous ideas, which I'd be happy to bring forward to you in a work session if so requested, or I may just show up and force it on you. But my, I said, what do you do when you get, you don't know the sidewalk is closed? You make a turn? You're forced into the street? His response to me was, well, they can go back to the corner and cross there. Okay, what if there are two builds across the street? Well, they'll just have to go to the next block. What if you live on that block? I mean, there are all kinds of problems that I have with that particular attitude. This is my personal conversation with him, lasted about 15 minutes. We went back and forth, and I found it unacceptable. So I just, I wanted, my two points being that and the fact that the current ordinance mirrors that of other cities as written, doesn't need to be changed. And they are able to keep open sidewalks. I have issued tickets, I have issued stop-work orders, and usually when I find a sidewalk that has a cold patch that has ruts in it, I make a call to the builder and it's fixed within a couple of days. And I have summoned builders directly out to the site that day and said, bring cold patch, bring some 21A gravel and compact it, I want to see it fixed today. It can be done, and it all hinges on enforcing the ordinance that we already have. It's all in enforcement, in my opinion. All right, thanks.
Thank you.
I just had a brief comment. The picture that this lady had, I live right across the street from the dumpster that's in the road there. So it can be challenging to pull out of the driveway, especially if the construction crew is parked on the street right in that area. So I'd be glad to see if something can be done about that. And also, you mentioned the possibility of reflectors for nighttime, so maybe nobody backs into it.
Can I get your name, please?
Candy Trumbull.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Lisa Kempner. I just wanted to say thank you. I thought your guys' comments and suggestions were awesome. And while I've come up here and complained to you all before, I also want to be sure that I come up here and say, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Rick Reche. I'm a resident of Berkeley in Cumberland. I want to read some numbers to you. 10638, 10671, 106164, 106222, 106189. Those are not lottery numbers. I'm a licensed builder in Michigan, also resident of Berkeley. I know how to read ordinances, and I've done construction of my own house. All of these have been broken in the past year. Walking around the streets, having to walk into the street, walk into frozen ice, slick mud is not acceptable. I'm a taxpayer, I expect better. Now, the sad part is, all of these ordinances, I also learned by personal experience with the code enforcement department of Berkeley 22 years ago. And I went through with all these points and got solutions on doing this without having to close my sidewalk. There's always something to be done, and what I'm upset about is no enforcement today. I had to follow the rules, I was able to do it, I can do it as a businessman. If it's cost me money, I'm going to figure out the best way to do it. And that's what I want to hear from this ordinance, is that the builders make sure they understand it's their business decision. They can close the sidewalk, you pay for it. You leave it open, you don't. It's real simple. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Paul Jordan. I live on Tyler. Wanted to stand up here for a second and just say that I support Mr. Henon's idea of bringing in a third-party of bringing in a third party to kind of coordinate these things. One of the issues that we've had is, everybody's been pointing out, is that there's been a very loose interpretation of what the existing code is, and there hasn't been a whole lot of enforcement. The no-no picture, you can walk through almost any neighborhood in Berkeley and see that being done right now. I wanna thank you for voting to move this into a work session, and I also wanna say specifically thank you to Ms. Grave Line for having exactly the same idea that I had when I was chatting over this with Matt.
I'll give you credit, you can have it.
Oh, no, I'm willing to share, I'm glad. Mine's thinking alike here. Regarding putting up the notices that, you know, yes, the city is aware that this issue has happened, and that we're addressing it, or that these permits have been pulled, things like that. There's a build site that's one block from my house, there's actually two of them, and it's been seven or eight months of having the walkway torn up. Wasn't a whole lot better when the house was there, but that's a different story. So we do need to have a timeline and have some time limitations on closing it down. Thank you very much, folks. Appreciate the good work.
Thanks, Paul. Very good. Well, if there's nothing additional, then we need to vote. So Ms. Spoucher, I remember everybody, we're voting on the work session.
Yeah.
We're moving this onto a work session. Ms. Spoucher, would you please call the roll?
Kadekal?
Definitely.
Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrak?
Yes.
Baker?
Oh, heck, yes.
Gravlin?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. Thank you all. Ms. Spoucher, would you please read item number seven?
Motion number M1517, matter of authorizing the city manager to enter an agreement with StanTech Architectural Incorporated of Berkeley, Michigan to conduct a feasibility study and provide cost estimates for the Parks and Recreation Complex for the amount not to exceed $33,500. A budget amendment is required.
Is there a motion to approve M1517?
Move to approve M1517.
Moved by Councilmember Turbrak?
Support.
Support by Councilmember Kadekal. Mr. Baumgarten.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This item is specific to the future of a possible community center, a community center with either an ice arena, a community center that's standalone, or a community center with an indoor and/or outdoor pool. Our community advisory committee is doing fantastic work. They've gotten to the point where they've got a lot more questions on the hows and the whys concerning the community center, and they're all very, very good questions and those that, and questions that we cannot answer in-house. So in order to provide them with the best information possible, we're asking that the city council approve this study. It will be, we're gonna pay for it out of a specific building fund, so it won't, it requires a budget amendment, but it won't draw away from any existing programs. This is very different from the 2014 study that we did also with StanTech. That looked at, the 2014 study looked at all the city's facilities and looked at functional and structural deficiencies, as well as energy efficiency issues that are each of our buildings. Different, and it gave us different ways to repair those. This is different from the standpoint of the deliverables that we'll be getting from StanTech on this would be to take the four different scenarios, you know, standalone, with ice, with pool, indoor, with door, with pool, outdoor, and actually will give us preliminary or conceptual layouts of how those floor plans could go, the amount of space that would be needed to dedicate to each one of those uses, some preliminary sketches on how that would lay out on the site. We looked at some of the items we had from the 2009, and none of them seem to work with the given infrastructure we have underground. So we need to reexamine those layouts. So you have in front of you the agreement that we would have with StanTech that lays out all the deliverables, as well as the scope of work in the four scenarios, and also a schedule of how that would go. We are, you'll notice, and for those doing the math, five weeks, which is our intended timeline here, takes them, the CAC passed the time limit that they were originally tasked with. One of the things that they are gonna be asking this council for is some additional time to make some thoughtful considerations. So just be aware that that is coming down the pipeline as well. But this is a good way of making good decisions, and it's the type of study that we need if we're gonna move forward in making any kind of determination on what the future of that space should be. So hopefully that outlined it adequately.
Very good. Any questions, discussions? Councilmember Stedman?
What kind of additional time are they gonna be asking for?
I'm not sure what their timeline, timeline they're looking at right now, but they just know that by March 20th, which is their intended date of deliverables, they won't have the best information for you possible.
Okay.
Councilmember Turbrak?
Thank you. Just a comment, one thanking the committee, the citizens advisory committee. And I don't really see how they can make any real determination without this information as to anything related to the community center. So if they are willing to give us some more time, and we're looking at five weeks here, a lot of different options, but I think that's gonna drive the conversation, especially as it relates to the community center, potential community center aspect of one of the things that they're studying. So I'm grateful that we are doing this now, wish we would've done it before, but we weren't entirely sure what the scope of what we're looking at. But I'm glad we're gonna have this information, and the citizens advisory committee is gonna have the opportunity to look at the four different scenarios that you mentioned, try to determine which is in the best interest of all the residents of the city. So thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Well, absolutely right. This is a critical decision, and they need all the information, the best information they can get. And so I'm also supportive of this. Did you want to weigh in on this?
Dennis Henon again, on Vermont. I've attended all the CAC meetings, and just one observation, I think their sentiment is looking for another 60 to 90 days. Now, that's not official, they have to make that determination for themselves, but I think that's the direction that they were looking at. I support that there, that this study, that there be some study. The only question I have is one of pricing and competitive bid, is StanTech the only ones that are qualified to do it? Is there someone else that can do it more affordably? Are StanTech in a good position because they've done the other studies in the past? But that's the only concern I have about it, but I support the idea of the study.
Very good. Thank you.
StanTech's familiarity with the existing site and its conditions means that there's a lot less that they have to do in the lead-up to this, and that's how they were more competitive than some of the other people we spoke with. So they were able to skip, you know, steps A through C and go right to D, as it were.
Very good. Well, then, seeing no one else, Ms. Spoucher, would you please call the roll on M1517?
Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrak?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Gravlin?
Yes.
Kadekal?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. And now, Ms. Spoucher, would you please read item number eight?
Motion number M1617, matter of adopting a charitable gaming license policy for the city of Berkeley.
Is there a motion to approve M1617?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Gravlin?
Support.
Support by Councilmember Turbrak. Mr. Baumgarten?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This item is somewhat related to our last item, or our first item, that's specific to recognizing the nonprofits operating here in the city. This was something that comes to us as a bit, was a bit of a surprise, so we wanna make sure that we've got dependable regulations in place so that we know, we have a process for making these decisions and what to bring to this body. So Mr. Stern has prepared some information for us.
Yes, and I think the city manager has stated it pretty well. You did have the item earlier, and foreseeing that we may have more of those in the future, it seemed prudent to me that we should develop a council. The city manager concurred, but to develop a policy to help not only guide council with some criteria, but to make sure that you, on a consistent basis, have full and complete information at your disposal. So I submitted a sample policy to the city clerk, and she skillfully whipped it into suitable form for the Berkeley City Council to consider, and that's what you had before you tonight. It's pretty straightforward, and in fact, as you can see from the information requirements, that's the very same information that you were provided in connection with the item before you tonight. And then it just sets forth some, several, really, A through E criteria to help you in your decision-making. So pretty straightforward and just something to have available to you, similar to what we do with, when we get the other types of charitable solicitation requests, when, you know, during the summertime, when people wanna be able to solicit at the street intersections and that sort of thing.
Very good. So this kind of streamlines it a little bit for us.
That's the idea.
Any discussion on this? Any questions for our attorney? Seeing none, then, Ms. Spoucher, would you please call the roll on M1617?
Turbrak?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Gravlin?
Yes.
Kadekal?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. And now, Ms. Spoucher, would you please read item number nine?
Ordinance number 00217, matter of considering the first reading of an ordinance to amend Article 1 and adding new Article 4 to Chapter 22, Animals of the City of Berkeley Code of Ordinance to Permit, Regulate, and Establish Requirements Relating to the Keeping of Chickens. Set date certain March 20th, 2017.
Is there a motion to approve ordinance 0217? So is there a motion to approve?
I move that we send this one to a work session, too.
Wait a minute now till we see here. Can we get a motion here on this first, to talk about it? 0217 for chickens. Any advance on?
Has to prove to talk about it or dies for later.
Motion to approve to talk about it by Councilmember Turbrak, with support by Councilmember Mayor Pro Tem.
The other guy.
The other guy. Very good. Now we can talk about what we want to do. We have a proposed outline here of what we want to do with chickens. I have very definite opinion about this matter, and I might as well tell you what my opinion is.
Don't be chicken.
I won't be chicken. I grew up on a farm. We had over 100 cows and about 25 or 30 chickens. The 30 chickens were a bigger problem than the 100 cows, I can guarantee you that. And we are not living on a farm here, we're living in an urban setting with houses in close proximity to one another. We've had many discussions in the past about rodent problems. And I cannot bring myself to support chickens in Berkeley, but I have worth one vote, and that's, they're my two cents worth on chickens. Councilmember Turbrak?
Call me whatever you want. So I, this is also something that we've been looking at and reading a lot about. I didn't grow up on a farm, I grew up in Berkeley, and it was not a, not a farm. I don't have direct interactions with chickens other than going to farms, you know, somewhere not in Berkeley. And I'm not necessarily, I'm really not trying to make light of this chicken thing because it is important to a number of residents. I can only talk about it again. I speak from a very practical perspective. How would I feel if, you know, I am a resident, if there's a chicken coop in the yard next to me? And for me, it's more of an issue of proximity. I mean, our houses, our yards are, you know, we're very close. We don't have a ton of huge lots where you can have a chicken coop that may not disrupt you or noise. You know, and we've, I've read a lot, and we've been told that, you know, responsible chicken owners, there's not an issue as it attracts to potential rodents. And I'm not entirely sold on that, and I think the key word, again, comes down to responsible pet owners. We have a number of pet owners in the city that maybe are not as responsible as we would like them to be when it comes to picking up after their pets. And I worry that adding another option for pets that may directly contribute to the rodent problem that we are already fighting, it seems fairly constantly, practically does not make a lot of sense to me. You know, as the mayor said, though, I'm certainly one vote in my perspective. I just don't think it's the right time for Berkeley to move into the chicken game, I think, until we really get our rodent issue squared away. Potentially, it might be something to look at. I'm not against chickens in general, I like chickens and eggs. Put that, put that out there. But I just don't think it's the right time for us right now, so I am not supportive today.
Mayor Pro Tem Baker?
Thank you, honor, and not to ruffle any feathers, but as Cluck would have it, we do have some folks, so it appears like we've kind of putting cards on the table pretty quick here. I would at least like to give the city manager an opportunity to describe and some high-level what it is we're actually talking about here, and if there are folks that'd like to offer some opinions. I'm, you know, I'm really on the chicken wire fence on this one. If you, I'll stop, I'll stop that. The yolk's on me, so I'll stop.
Well, I certainly won't balk from this opportunity. So I, again, like I said, I won't balk from this opportunity here. And I did, in a previous community, encounter this issue, and there was some opposition to it. Ultimately, that community decided to do it to the proximity, the, there was a larger yards, or more of the average there, but it was a very small group that actually took advantage of it. And we did, I will say, from having a dual code enforcement role there, I did see that for the most part, we did not have any issues with the issues that, the rodent issues, the poor use issues. But again, the proximity to other homes is certainly different here, and it might be more of a nuisance to your surrounding neighbors. What the, the structure of the ordinance that you have enclosed here focuses not so much on the animals, although it does restrict to three hens, egg-laying hens, so this is not a opportunity for meat, this is not an opportunity for like roosters or anything like that. These would be egg-laying hens that we kept as pets and to gather eggs from. Really, the structure of this ordinance focuses on how they're kept and the conditions that they're maintained in, focusing on the size and structure of the coop, as well as the need for cleanliness and the care instructions that we actually borrow from the Michigan agricultural guidelines that are prevalent throughout the state. If the council does decide to go through with this, we will place, again, a great amount of emphasis on the enforcement of the conditions, but it is still a non-traditional pet, and it's not something that is certainly, is, would be unique throughout the community. I don't think you'll have a lot of people utilizing it.
I talked to a local mayor that has it in their community, and they haven't had too many objections from neighbors, but very, very few people actually take advantage of this because it is quite expensive, the coop design and security of all of that and so on. Those of you who read the Free Press, they had a timely article yesterday, Coyotes Make Pest of Themselves During March Breeding Season. And there's, that's the title of the article, and they're talking about coyotes expanding dramatically because of chickens. Councilmember Kadekal?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too talked to someone in a different city than who the mayor talked to, a public official there, and he also said that they didn't have a lot of problems with the chickens. You mentioned the word pet. In Berkeley, we're allowed three pets total. I don't care if it's three dogs, three cat. People that are gonna get three hens and have a dog and a cat, I mean, they're gonna have to understand if we would pass something like this, that they're gonna be counted as a pet. I mean, I know they're two-legged, as we spoke earlier, but they're still pets, so. And I am on the fence with this, as Mayor Pro Tem Baker, because of the response I'm hearing from the different city officials, the one the mayor told us about and the one I spoke with. I know that there are some here right now, and I haven't really heard any complaints from any neighbors. We did get emails pro and con from the people. I don't know if any of you are here today that sent us an email, but I'd like to hear from you.
I have reached out to each of you independently. Some of us have had conversations. I am not currently a Berkeley resident. I'm a prospective homebuyer in Berkeley and actively seeking a home at this time. I'm a Lathrop Village resident, and I have three hens. So I hear initially a lot of laughter and a lot of concern. I have had the wonderful opportunity to work with Mr. Baumgartner in the past. The city I live in, Lathrop Village, does have larger yards. But if you look at the communities around us, the majority of them have already approved this in their cities. Ferndale, Royal Oak, Madison Heights, parts of Troy, parts of Southfield, parts of most the cities around you. Berkeley is an island where this isn't allowed. And I would like to reach out to each of you to say that you are welcome and invited to come and see what it's like in reality. Because we're talking about farms. That's not a comparison of what we're looking at here. No one is seeking a farm. I have three small hens. They don't make noise. They don't smell. They don't invite rats. If you talk, take the time to talk to the surrounding communities and the people in their city government, I feel that you would be hard-pressed to find a single member of any city government telling you that there's ever been an issue. They are kept similar things similarly to a dog. There's a kennel-type of environment. People keep dog food out. It's a matter of us keeping our food so it's not laying out. I just would like you to kind of take a moment to consider it seriously, rather than kind of this, I appreciate the jokes and stuff, but do take it seriously because it is something to, for me, as a prospective homebuyer, I could choose to live in Royal Oak instead. I want to be a part of Berkeley. I want to bring my girls along. And as Matt, excuse me, Mr. Baumgartner, has real-life experience, much as we've said in earlier issues, talk with the other communities around you. And I believe there's another Berkeley resident here who has taken the steps to go in-depth and interviewed other cities and provided that information for you. I was, I found the article about the coyote interesting, but also, if at one conversation we say, "This is only going to affect a few families. This is not, you're not going to be overrun with chickens," it's something that is a unique to someone that is environmentally conscious, someone that wants to have their own food source. But at the other end of the spectrum, say, "It's affecting, it's providing food for coyotes," there really aren't very many chickens around. It's not something that coyotes see an influx of chickens. There's just a few. And they are in a predator-proof, because these are, these are our family members. We don't want them to be prey to predators. If you can see the actual chicken owners' facilities, you will see that they are Fort Knox. There's nothing getting into my chickens. And absolutely no issues with rats. You would be hard-pressed to find any neighboring city to tell you that they've had a single rat issue because of chickens. They're in a, their food doesn't lay out. They're in a house that a rat can't get into. I would really appreciate your serious consideration and also understanding that this is zero follow-up almost from a government perspective. Once the ordinance is made so that the proper standards are in place, it's not going to take any time, it's not going to cost a lot of money. But it is something that's very important to a few in the community. And Berkeley, one of the reasons I want to come to Berkeley is because I love the forward-thinking community. And when all the other communities around us have already said this is okay and not been an issue, it really shouldn't be a big deal. And I hope that it's something that you will seriously consider. And please, please, come. You are invited to see what it really looks like, what it smells like, what it sounds like, what you hear from my neighbors. They're quieter than a dog. They don't escape like dogs do. They're not dangerous like dogs can be. We all cherish dogs. This is, this is not a big deal. I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Can you leave your phone number at the clerk's desk?
Absolutely. Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I started this mess. I published a 28-page report, which I hope you all had time to at least peruse back in November. I think my opinions of the birds themselves is pretty well-understood at this point. Mr. Baumgartner and I have worked for quite a few months now on coming up with an ordinance proposal that addresses both the concerns that we've heard from the public in other communities over the past 10 years, as well as makes the ordinance friendly towards those of us who would like to take advantage of it, which, as has been stated by Courtney, is very few. I lived in Ferndale when the ordinance was passed there with the help of Ms. Mikulski. There's been no problems. And part of this report was several pages of, I called code enforcement and/or the inspectors in charge of whatever for most of the surrounding communities here in Oakland County. I asked them questions such as, you know, "Has there been any problems as far as cleanliness? Has there been any problems with additional vermin? Has there been any problems with, you know, chickens getting out and terrorizing the neighborhood, ravaging gangs of chickens in the street?" There isn't. Full stop. There isn't problems. So this isn't going to be a situation where you're going to, you know, have 500 people sign up the next day and then, you know, two months after that, you know, it's going to be teeming with chickens and rats in the streets. It's just not going to happen. We have plenty of circumstantial as well as scientific evidence for that. I can tell you personally, there was rats in Berkeley before I had chickens. There was rats in Berkeley while I had my chickens for the three years here. There will be rats in Berkeley as there is today forever because rats are part of city life. One thing I can also tell you is, the rats that we had, I killed them. They're gone. The net effect of my having chickens in Berkeley was fewer rats. And it turns out the cause of the rats was an improperly constructed storage shed in the yard behind mine. It was sitting on a pad. It had no rat wall, no foundation. And when that was torn up to make way for a new house, we haven't seen a rat since. Chickens are in Ferndale right now, so they weren't the cause nor the solution there. But it's a, it's a fear. I acknowledge that. I understand it. It's not a reality. So I hope you will consider this. Matt and I worked very hard on it, like Courtney had suggested, and I invited you all when this began. The invitation still stands, although it's a couple miles to the south. The girls know their names. They come when called. You know, they do tricks. They're not anything like you would have expected. And, you know, like I had started when I opened this can of worms back in November, you know, I love birds. They're near and dear to my heart. And I hope that, you know, we can move forward on this and get past a lot of the rhetoric and a lot of the negativity. And as has been mentioned as well, you know, we're not talking farm scale here. Farm scale is a very different animal, if I may give a pun nod to Mr. Baker. You know, this is a small-time kind of operation. We're trying to codify it so that it is very specific in the materials and the construction and the size and things like that, so that there just can't be problems. And because it is expensive, we have found over the years in practice within communities where it is strictly codified, they're, the people that are investing in this are taking care of their investment. They're not, you know, even if the chickens did get out to run out in the street, they go home at the end of the night because they can't see in the dark. And that's just, you know, what a nice thing to know is if they did get out, if something did happen, it was terrible, a kid, you know, somebody had a child left it unlocked, the chicken's not going to bother anybody. It's going to go home because that's home. So hopefully, that's going to take some of the fear out of it for you guys. I'm happy to answer any questions. You know, this is a subject that, once you get into it, you learn pretty much everything you can. I'm a nerd like that, and that's a lot of the stuff I'm into. So you have my number, you have my email address, you have my address, you have the report, and of course, you have the proposal that Mr. Baumgartner and I have come up with. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Does anybody have a question for this man? In view of his, in view of his extensive research?
Thank you. I do appreciate the passion for this and the other communications that we've received. And I did have some technical questions about the ordinance that may kind of be beside the point. I mean, I think the broader theme is that, maybe back to what my colleague had mentioned, an opportunity to study this a little bit more detail might, might be of some use to us a couple, we call them "go and sees," an opportunity to actually, you know, go and see and understand. But as long as I have you here, I was curious, there was some specificity around the nature of the permit. First of all, I applaud the notion of a permit to the earlier comments that demonstrates the seriousness with which the applicant or the owner treats this. When I think about, you need nothing to go get a bird feeder. You can have a bunch of bird feeders. We try to enforce bird feeding things. We had a whole big dialogue about that. And, you know, there's nothing to that. Dog, you at least need a license, right? Every two or three years, depending on the vaccination schedule. So there's some kind of intermediate commitment required in connection with the city for that. This feels like a significant step forward in terms of the commitment that's required on the part of the owner. Again, if you look at that spectrum from just buying a bird feeder to getting a license to actually going through not only a permit, but an annual permit that requires all the dispense. So anyway, my question was, the choice of March 31st as the, as the end date for the permit, was that date picked for seasonality? Was it just convenience? So it doesn't appear as though it's an annual permit. It appears as though it terminates on the 31st, no matter what. I just was curious of the rationale behind that. So if I was to go in on, on February 2nd and apply for a permit, it would only be good for that month and a half or whatever before the 31st comes up, and I'd have to do it again. So that's a technical question as to the nature of permitting, which might be a little bit further down the road for us. I'd like to at least get to the point where we can, you know, see if that kind of question is even worth exploring. But those are the kinds of things I was thinking about as I reviewed this.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, the date was selected to be at a point in the year where we were actually in the winter season and getting into spring with cleanliness and rodent control at the forefront of our minds at that point. So make sure the yards kept clean, make sure there's no issues as the rest of the rodent population sort of wakes up and comes out of their burrows. Make sure that they're not invited to come to this area.
And on that note, it's also maybe coincidental to Mr. Baumgartner's thinking, around Easter time is when you see a large surge in chicken purchases and people becoming interested in that, both as the unfortunate practice of giving away baby chicks as gifts, but that's also the, the cycle of birth and existence for the chickens themselves in the natural environment. So, you know, the springtime, the March, April months are when we see the most people wanting to do this or just jumping right into it. And, you know, at that point, a lot of folks, just like with a lot of the other exotic species, you know, they'll get to the point where the birds become adolescents and larger and not cute little fluff balls anymore. And then we see, you know, gosh, what do they do with them? And you'll see the shelters will become overrun at that time. But the people that are going to stick with them and/or perhaps adopt these animals that were errantly given as gifts, you know, that's going to be the time of year when it's going to be pressing for them. So it is a good recycle date for that, I think, or that, in around that, assuming, of course, that it's not like you fear where it's, you know, one month, one month and done kind of thing. But obviously, that's some legal language you guys can, can work out that way.
Sure. Pro-rated or something like that. I don't know. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
John Courtney. And regarding this chicken thing, my concern is regarding rats. I've caught several of them. I gave a few to the code enforcement, but he didn't want them, so. One of the issues is the construction of these chicken cages. My concern, again, is with the rats. As it is, Berkeley's overwhelmed with rats, with mainly with the bird feeders and going after the food. So what kind of constructions are these? I've been in my house for now for nine years. And if one of my neighbors wanted to put a coop in their backyard, before they do that, I'd certainly like to be the, hey, you know, "Do you have a problem with me putting a chicken coop, coop in my backyard?" So I think it'd be a requirement to talk to the homeowners on both sides, as well as the back, see whether or not they would have any issues. Now, the young lady here that's considering purchasing a home here in Berkeley, now, she may want to talk to the neighbors to both sides as she finds the house in one of the back to see whether or not they do have a house, they have any problem with putting a chicken coop in the back. If these chickens are laying eggs and the eggs are being sold, are they going to be required to have a business license for selling the eggs or giving the eggs away or chickens? Are they going to need to require to have a business permit for that? There's pets. If they're selling the eggs or giving the eggs away, now you're talking about a business. They're going to be required to have a business permit. So I'd like to have at least a consideration, if somebody wants to put in a coop in their backyard, that they let me know.
Okay.
So I can say yes or no. Thank you.
Thank you.
To that point, those are some great comments. I did notice in the draft, it says chickens may be kept as family pets or to lay eggs for personal consumption only. So according to the, the draft ordinance, selling those or having a business, that's an excellent point. And this seems to, to take that off the table by saying that it's for personal consumption only implies that, or makes it pretty clear that they wouldn't be able to sell this for profit or things. And in terms of the construction of the coop and all of that, those are some questions I have as well in terms of height, off the ground, and those types of things that I couldn't tell clearly here. But I think if we were to go out and see and learn from those responsible owners that have taken those steps to build a proper, you know, living space for these guys or these gals, that, that they could then, we'd have a better, better understanding of what's going on with that design. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Shea?
May I perhaps answer a couple of those questions?
Sure.
To alleviate Mr. Courtney's concerns. When you have three hens, you get three eggs a day. That's not nearly enough to sell. I oftentimes have to kind of manage my eggs. So I think that you'll find that with the proposal for three hens, that's not even an issue. There, there would, there's not enough eggs to sell. And then with regard to the housing, everyone has commonly heard the term "chicken wire." Chicken wire is designed to keep chickens in, not predators out. Predators can, raccoons, opossums, get right through that. What is used in a chicken coop is called hardware mesh. It's typically with a quarter-inch hole. There's no way a predator can eat through it, get through it. Quarter-inch hole, there's absolutely no way predators get in.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
Councilor Terbrack?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, what I've, you know, been listening to, to everyone who's been able to speak today and looking at the comments and feedback that I at least have received over, you know, the past few weeks, I think the biggest obstacle that I see right now is education. Like I said, I've lived in Berkeley my entire life. I've never had hens or chickens. I don't know anyone that's had hens or chickens. So to me, this is something that I don't know about. And I've read the report that you prepared. It was very in-depth. And again, in the back of my mind, I'm thinking, gosh, I just, you know, here we have all these rats. And I'm not going to say we're overrun with rats, but, but there are rats and they're certainly, you know, a problem and a concern. And I just am hesitant, you know, in my lack of education, I suppose, you know, how that would, or chickens not impacting that. And I think that, you know, what we've talked about with the, the construction of the coop and what it'd actually look like and, and three hens, I think for me to, to feel more comfortable, and I think for the residents, at least the residents that have reached out to me over the past couple of weeks, especially the past couple of days since this has been on the agenda, is also some education because I'm getting the same kind of thing. No, we got rats. You're kidding me? I can't believe you would even think about this and why is it even on the agenda? And again, it's, it's much more, I think of, we are kind of dipping our toe in right here, not in got rats. You're kidding me? I can't believe you would even think about this and why is it even on the agenda? And again, it's much more, I think, of, we are kind of dipping our toe in right here, not entirely sure that we're ready to move forward with everything right now, at least I am not. But I think it is just a start in having the conversation here and talking. And I have also talked to neighboring communities. And there has not been many or any real concerns. I think it's more of the way that we maybe think, we're maybe projecting this would look because we've been to farms and you see clucking chickens and hens and it's a lot of roosters. My gosh. So I think it's just strictly a matter of, you know, where we are and what we actually know versus what actually happened. So I think this is at least opening up the conversations. I know I've learned a ton about this and hopefully we can help to try to get some more information out to the residents as well who have questions on this and kind of get over some of the initial impressions that may not necessarily be the case. So, you know, from that standpoint, I am glad that we're having this discussion right now. I think it is going to, you know, hopefully progress. And at some point, maybe we'll be able to see this back and people will feel more comfortable knowing what we're getting into. I think that's the biggest thing is just uncertainty right now.
Thank you. Councilmember Kedek?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
If I may, to address the concern with chickens and rats, I think is important, too. A lot of people don't really, aren't cognizant of the actual connection there. There is no magic power that rats have to detect chickens in any given place and then stream in there. It's just like with the bird feeders. It is the feed that is left laying on the ground and it's not cleaned up that brings in the scavengers, whether they be rats, chipmunks, squirrels, sparrows, you name it. So to, the number one way that we have to negate that issue is to exclude the other animals from the feed. We do that with proper storage and galvanized containers that are rat-proof, et cetera. And then in the case of my own operation, we had what's called a treedle feeder, which is a galvanized box with a pedal on the front of it, about the size of this podium, that we train the birds to step on, which opens a lid, gives them access to the feed. It is required to be of a hen weight to activate the treedle. And you have to train them over. It took my birds about a week, and it's really fascinating to watch because as soon as one gets it, it's like it transmits, they all get it. If they're within visual range, they understand instantaneously. So that was pretty cool to see. But the end result is the squirrels, the sparrows, the rats, et cetera, can't figure it out, can't get into it. So they are excluded from the food, and that cuts down on those kind of problems from any kind of scavenging critters. So there are a number of ways, you know, it is 2017, people have been thinking about this a long time, you know, both in large-scale operations and home operations. This trend started around 2002 or so. So the industry has had a long time to come up with solutions to problems. The participants like myself have come up with a lot of different solutions to the problems because we don't want the issues any more than anybody else does. Nobody wants a stinky cat litter box. Nobody wants a stinky chicken coop neither. And there are, you know, numerous ways to keep it dry, clean it out just like a cat litter box. We use sand and a product called Sweet PDZ, which is a horse stall deodorizer. And it works great. There's no problems. And if there was problems, we wouldn't still be after it because it's not pleasant. So I hope that answers some of your questions with that.
Very good.
As you say, there are the responsible pet owners and irresponsible ones. So my comment is for the irresponsible one, what recourse might I have or what procedure would I have to do in the event there was an issue?
Okay, thank you. Matt, you want to answer that question?
Yes, Mr. Courtney. So under the current proposed draft ordinance, a violation of this provision will be considered a municipal civil infraction and will be subject to all the same items that we have for each of our code enforcement issues. So your remedy would be to report this violation. Since it operates under a specific permit, we would be able to get inspection scheduled for enforcement and get back to that area as opposed to just the general search and seizure laws that apply to the conditions of a backyard. We actually, since this operates under a permit, we'd be able to say, we need to have a permanent inspection to make sure, because we've got, you're operating correctly because we've gotten a complaint on this.
Okay, so the inspection would show that the bird were immunized, had all their immunization.
No, this would be, this would be an onsite inspection to show if the food, if the feed does not meet the storage requirements, we will require galvanized metal if it's on the ground, if it's scattered, if it looks like we're inviting rats, just like if we were to go in the backyard and if there's a dog-friendly yard that's not being cleaned up well or any issue like that.
The reason I ask regarding immunization of birds, I think the media reported they have killed like a whole block because of some sort of disease or parasite, over 300,000 chickens were destroyed and be destroyed. Kind of a third...
Or flu, yeah. That's an entirely different matter.
Yeah.
So my name is Laura McColsky. I'm your Ferndale checking lady. I was, I was the person who was involved in getting the ordinance passed back in 2012. Took about four years for it to get passed. So we've been doing this for five years. We've had zero complaints. The inspector loves coming out. I'm really glad that you included March 31st as your date. He comes out on roughly about January 2nd, and it's always bitterly cold. Every time he comes to my backyard, it snows, it's freezing, it's just a giant disaster whenever he comes out. But he does love it. And we love our chickens. We've had a great time. I won't belabor that. I will invite you to come see my coop. And I do have myself, my own grinning face, here on this magazine because Ferndale was featured. As far as, as far as the rats, I've talked about rats for, let's see, nine years now, because the minute that I wanted chickens in Ferndale, rats came into the equation. Because of that, I have gotten very rat savvy. So I'm just going to go there. I'm going to talk about the rats, not about the chickens. Rats are attracted to dog waste, cat waste, bird feeders, fruit trees, gardens, anything and everything. And I have no doubt that you have rat problems. We do, too. We ended up doing a sort of a grassroots approach to attacking the rat issue. We mapped it. It's all over the place. We mapped it in part just to make sure that it wasn't anything connected to chickens. And every chicken owner, there's roughly about 10 that have shared their address with me personally, every chicken owner had sort of a radius around their house where there were no rats. Because, one, chickens don't actually attract the rats. A chicken would eat a rat. I have probably about a 10-pound chicken named Dump Truck. She would eat a rat. So as far as, as far as the chickens being the issue, they're really, truly not. Your average chicken owner who has backyard chickens is usually a very responsible person who's committed to their yard, their community, and their chickens. There's, I personally would never want chickens in my coop. And the way that you can construct a coop with, again, that hardware mesh that she had mentioned, you can take it down into the soil about two feet down and two feet out to prevent that. And I'm not sure if that was in your ordinance or not, but that would be a suggestion that I would put out there. So it's effectively like a rat wall. They can't chew through it, they can't slink through it, and you're making it, quote-unquote, Fort Knox. I do think that it would be prudent for you to consider this. I've talked to several people. One in particular, I believe, was the woman that runs City Girl Soap. She lives in Berkeley. Yeah, great lady. She's looking at moving to Pontiac because she can't have chickens here. And it's just a missed opportunity. You have cities like Seattle, Chicago, Austin, they all have chickens. They all allow chickens. And the vast majority of the issues aren't there. It sounds spooky. It sounds weird. I know I feel weird talking about chickens on a regular basis. That's not my profession. But it's, it is wonderful. They are pets, and it's not a farm, not at all. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Kedek?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I would like anyone that's talking or that has a coop, if they wouldn't mind putting their name down, because I will come out and see them. I believe, I know Councilmember Stedman said this right away, but I do believe a work session would be in order here. And I was thinking maybe like at the April 3rd meeting, because I think at the March 20th, we'll probably have something else on there. So I'm thinking that, you know, within the next couple meetings, have a work session. I will do my homework. I've read your report, you know, and as Councilmember Terbrecht said, education is the key. And, you know, it's, again, as I spoke to the public official today from Royal Oak, he told me, he said, there are no problems. He said, it's not like you have roosters or they're making noise. He said, it's just a few chickens and they've had not one complaint. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
I think there's one word.
One more, then we'll...
I do apologize. Sorry about that. My name is Marissa Weber. I am a resident of Berkeley. I live in Columbia. Better?
Oh, just behind you. Thank you.
So I did talk to Mr. Baker about this. I am in favor of this. I have friends and family that have hens. It's a wonderful opportunity, if not, you know, for a pet, for the eggs. There are a couple things that I did want to have you guys look at for the work session. Mainly the second and third offense punishments. I noticed that there was a first offense punishment. The problem is, is that every once in a while, you get a bad egg. And I do apologize for the pun.
I love it.
But you do, and you have to be prepared for that. That's my main concern with this, is that you're going to find someone who isn't doing this properly, who isn't going to care, who's going to continue to ignore whatever you say. And unfortunately, that is the case sometimes. So that's, that's what I want you guys to look into. I want to see that added, to make sure that something is going to happen to maybe remove the chickens, maybe by the third offense. But what do we do with the chickens once we remove them from the home? Do we have a place that we can place them after they're removed? That's what I want to find out, is what can we do to protect the hens in a humane way, not dispose of them, per se? That's my only concern with them. I have looked into doing this backyard chicken culture. I think it's wonderful. But I also have a backup plan if it doesn't work out, if I find that I can't do this, if it's too expensive, or I just don't have the time. I have family out in Clarkston who raises chickens, who sells the eggs, who does this and has had great success and is so happy with this. He knows each of his hens by name. They come when called. They are beautiful animals. I don't think that this is really a laughing matter. I think this is something that we really should look at. And I think that we are missing out on great neighbors who want to bring their hens. I think that's wonderful, and I really want to see that done. And I, that's, that's the most of it. The other part is, the Clarkston family member, he allows his hens to move, to scavenge in the grass, to break up the grass and get the grubs and all the bugs that they eat. He moves his fence every so often. And that's my other concern, is is there a way that we can make that work? I know that it's a temporary closure. Can we make that part of it to where that's allowable and allow the chickens to graze, not all the time, have a permanent resident for them, but have them allowed to, you know, go around in the backyard beyond what is allowed in this? That's what I want to know.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm neither pro nor con chicken. I just haven't educated myself enough yet. But, and I think I have a lot of skepticism, like several of you and many people in the community probably do. But one thing to consider, maybe a pilot program where on a very limited scope, maybe just in one location or two, that this be allowed, get buy-in from the neighbors first and see if this works. And in the process, it would also educate us, maybe make us more comfortable with it. Again, I haven't looked into this to know, even though if I'd be willing to support that. But if you were going to go the route of considering this ordinance, I think I would want to see a pilot program first before citywide adoption.
Thank you. One community passed this on a provisional basis, on a trial basis for one year. And they had no problem, and it continued.
Hi, Candy Trumbull. I'm in Elwood. I just wanted to voice my support for the chicken ordinance. I've been to visit Mrs. O'Shea's chickens several times, and like she said, they're not noisy, there is no smell. If you didn't know the chickens were there and didn't see them, you really wouldn't have any idea. I also have an 11-year-old daughter who's involved in the 4-H club and would love to have her have the opportunity to raise chickens and have that educational experience. From my understanding, if I have the right information, she has the opportunity to raise chickens to take to the Oakland County Fair. Someone told me that I could do that in Berkeley through the state of Michigan if it's for the fair, but of course she would have to get rid of them afterwards. Like I said, I've just heard this information. I don't know if it's true. But I really want to build the coop and have her raise the chickens and then have to get rid of them at the end of the Oakland County Fair. So I appreciate you looking into this and possibly having a work session on it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor. This has been very enlightening for me to learn more about it. I have had some skepticism, but I've been really interested and learned a lot from the materials that I've received. This conversation has helped me to be a little bit smarter about all of this, but certainly not enough to really understand the intricacies of these kinds of things. Early on, there was a suggestion to take this into a work session. I wonder if this group would be so interested, and it was mentioned again later, if there'd be, as the second or the motion, I'd certainly be in favor, but certainly there's others that would need to weigh in, if we could, in fact, to move this to a work session at some point down the road, perhaps with an opportunity to either, you know, I know we can make videos, but I think nothing like going out to see it because you can't smell through a video and all of that, to actually arrange some kind of a schedule so that one or more of the council folks could sign up for different times to get out there when it's convenient for the owners and different schedules to see this and then come back with some firsthand experience, to at least make an informed decision about how to move forward with this. So that's what I have. I have tons of questions, like, you know, how long do these guys live? If they're, you know, training them and they know their name, I assume they live a couple of years. It's, oh, it's opened up this whole new can of worms. So...
Okay, I like that idea because we all obviously are in need of education, and we've been educated tonight, and the materials you provided were certainly helpful as well. But why you got to go to the make it of the motion?
Yes, I'm good with the work session.
You're good with the work session? Very good. So then we have general consensus that we will, we will bring this up sometime down the way. There's a lot of things backed up on the schedule.
Yes.
And it'll come back again several meetings down ahead. And meanwhile, we have the opportunity, thanks to Mrs. O'Shea, to visit and see what exactly we're talking about. So we have a better understanding of, you know, what this precisely looks like. Well, there's lots of questions.
The residents are welcome as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Let's have a chicken party.
My only procedural suggestion obviously would be to ensure that council members go independently of other council members. The last thing we need is any issue pertaining to open meetings or any decision-making process. So if we could schedule it such that we're each, not to overburden any of the particular owners, maybe we could spread us out a little bit, but to make sure that we don't have any opportunity to commingle, so to speak. That's, this is where we talk about this stuff. And I'd like to make sure that we retain that focus on the right process.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you all. Ms. Boucher, would you please call the role now on this amended plan to put this into a work session?
Baker?
Yes.
Gravlin?
Yes.
Kedekel?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Terbrecht?
Yes.
Odoye?
Yes. Thank you. Now we come to the communications portion of tonight's meeting. And who's up first?
Councilmember Gravlin?
Councilmember Gravlin.
I will try to be brief. The Tree Board met on the 13th of February. Unfortunately, I was unable to be there, but Mrs. Losi was. So welcome to the Tree Board. I hope you enjoyed your first meeting. It was reported you're also going to get your daughter involved. So, hooray, your numbers are building. Keep them coming, people. I know they will, oh, I'm sorry. Judd Hart will be at the next meeting. He was unable to be there in February. So he is right now confirmed to be there on the 13th of this month. So come out next week and meet Judd Hart, ask any questions you may have. And they will be finalizing Arbor Day activities. Arbor Day is in April. So next week, they will be finalizing activities. We are mandated to have Arbor Day activities to maintain our status as a Tree City USA. So that is the Tree Board, the 13th, next Tuesday, 7:00 PM in the library. Come on out. out. The Planning Commission met last Tuesday, and it was the public hearing regarding the amendment to the master plan. We had exactly one comment, and that was, "Thank you." So that was much unexpected by everyone, I think, so that went very well. The next formal meeting is Tuesday, the 28th, but they do have a work session on the books for next week, the 14th, to receive a proposal about the last-let property, and to discuss with the DDA, the new DDA director, about downtown design guidelines, so that is on the 14th. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Kadakel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I'd like to thank everyone that came out tonight, both on the sidewalk issue and the chicken ordinance issue, and I look forward to speaking about these in the near future. I want to congratulate the Berkeley High School Swimming and Diving Team, as they won the OAA Blue Division Boys Title a couple weeks ago. They went 6-0 during the regular season, and then they, they beat like seven other teams during the regional, or, yeah, during the regional meet. Friends of Berkeley Parks and Recreation had a very successful euchre tournament, I want to thank everyone that participated in that. It was a win-win for both the American Legion and the Friends of Berkeley Parks and Recreation. And, I want to thank Cam and Mo Ying for their 23 years of community support and great food that they have provided for us at Cam's. I remember when it first opened, my wife and I went there four days a week, it was, I mean, and we tried everything, and I, I haven't stopped. So I want to thank them, and I want to wish the Lee family much success as they take over. And I want to wish everyone a happy, safe St. Patrick's Day. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Turbrack.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This Thursday, March 9th at 7 o'clock, is a community meeting, it is taking place during the Recreation Advisory Board Meeting. The Parks and Recreation is getting ready to submit grant application to the Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund, and we have, we're holding a public hearing, so this is about the Oxford Merchants Park property, potential development of that property, what that property might look like. So some of the things, as far as the meeting information, community members are certainly welcome, voice their opinions on components that will potentially be in the park, that will be submitted as part of this grant application. The elements and components being discussed are from the initial plan that was developed by Land and Landscape last year. There were three options, if you recall. The grant application that we are going to be submitting takes into many of the accounts of option C, but not any complete plan. There are some, some components from options A and B as well, but this is a very important meeting. Again, it's this Thursday, takes place at the normal Recreation Advisory Board Meeting this Thursday, 7 o'clock at the Community Center, but it's very important as we talk about the potential of Oxford Merchants Park, whatever it's going to be called, moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Baker.
Oh, thank you, Your Honor, three quick things as well. First, the Historical Committee has three new displays inside the museum, if you haven't had a chance to, to check those out. One focuses on Berkeley Then and Now, another on Remembering 12 Mile, and a third one on Cruising Woodward. So if you need a good reason to go back to the museum and check it out, it's just basically the other side of this building here, the Historic Fire Hall. Those three displays are wonderful. Secondly, and connected to that, shout out to one of the members of our Historical Committee, Toby Voit. So Toby is, in addition to volunteering here with our Historical Committee, she also works downtown at the, at the Detroit Museum, and she was recently in Washington DC advocating on behalf of American Alliance of Museums. And this is a, this is a picture of her and representatives of them, a meeting with Senator Debbie Stabenow, to request, you know, awareness and funding for museums, small and large, to help ensure that folks are able to preserve and promote their communities and their cities' histories. And so that was awesome that she was there, doing great things, wearing her Berkeley pride as she helped advocate on behalf of all of us. And finally, Berkeley Robotics. So, there's a thing called First Robotics of Michigan, it actually goes across the entire country, but it focuses in particular here on the Michigan side of it. The robotics team, Berkeley has one, it's awesome, they're called the Bears, their team is 247. And what this is about is helping instruct, helping the, the students to learn about science, engineering, technology, math. And that's all, that's all well and good, but what I really appreciate about it is the, the creativity and the teamwork and the fortitude. It takes to understand the nature of a challenge, there's like a season and you have a challenge, you have to build a robot, it's meant to compete in this challenge. They had an open house recently, and their first competition was last, last weekend in Southfield, this is a video I took from the, from that session, you can't probably really see it, but at least you kind of get the idea. What they do here is try to understand the nature of the competition and put together a, a robot that's controlled by the, by the students to score points and all of that, but it's, it's one of those co-opetition kinds of things, meaning you're in an alliance with two other teams trying to achieve a shared objective. And so you not only want to try to do the best you can yourself, but also want to make sure that your teammates, the other two teams in the, in the alliance are successful as well. So, a big shout out to all the volunteers, all the parents and the, and the supporters that helped make this happen. It's not cheap, and so they get a lot of great support, and a whole lot of time goes into the six-week build schedule to make these things happen. Check it out if you get a chance, they're looking for volunteers to help mentor the students, everything from programming, of course, to the engineering, designing the website, doing public relations, marketing, all of that stuff, those are skills that these, these students will take with them into their, their future careers. And so, it's more than just building a cool robot to do awesome stuff, it's helping develop a lot of critical skills that'll make them successful going forward. So, if you get a chance, check it out, it's absolutely worth it. Go Bears.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Councilwoman Stedman.
Well, first of all, I'll start out with the library, and they have a lot of things here, I'm not sure I'm gonna read them all. Matt is really busy over there. There's a Friends of Berkeley Library, Berkeley Public Library fundraiser, and that's going to be on Wednesday, March 22nd, from 5:00 to 9:00 PM at Patrick J's, and 20% of your total bill, any food or drink that you have, will be donated to the Friends of Patrick, Friends from Patrick J's. And they have very good fundraisers there, and I think they're very generous in what they donate to the people who are having the fundraiser. For adults, there's Animal Communication 101 on Wednesday, March 8th at 6:30. Planet D Non-A KC Swing Workshop Concert, which is going to be Monday, March 20th, at the First United Methodist Church, sponsored by the library. And then Jack Lussenberry on Michigan Politics, How Did Things Get This Way, and that's gonna be also at the same church on 12 Mile in Berkeley. Thursday, March, that's Thursday, March 22nd, sorry. Cocktails and Coloring at Amici's, Monday, March 27th, from 7:00 till 9:00. The Origami Club in the Berkeley Library, that's going to be Monday, March 6th. Afternoon Book Club, Tuesday, March 14th. Berkeley Reading Society, Thursday, March 16th. And for youth, there's gonna be several family craft nights, there's gonna be a movie, there's gonna be family storytime, lapset storytime, preschool storytime, parent-toddler storytime, and all kinds of other things. Now, what I'm gonna do is refer you to their website. And not to read the rest, read the rest of them. But anyways, they're, they're having a lot of programs this spring and this summer, so please look at the website, there's something for everybody. Also, for the Beautification Committee, we've been idle for the last couple of months, but we are having our first meeting of the year this coming Wednesday. People are welcome to join, it has no limit on members. We have at least one, possibly two new ones right now. And, so, but you're welcome to even just come and watch it and see, you know, see what it's all about. We meet at 6:30 on the second Wednesday of every month, across the street upstairs in the Public Safety Building. So, and that's it.
Thank you. Mr. Baumgut.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had my third chat with Matt on March 1st, I would, very appreciative of Teresa McCarleton for hosting us, we had it actually at the arena inside the Teen Center, which was very exciting. I also want to thank Ms. Barb Morris, who is actually our Perfect Attendance Award winner of, of, I think you've been to all three that I've been to, no? Oh, I'll try to give you an award anyway. All right, but I appreciate, they've grown each time, which I've been very encouraged by, we've had very good conversation, and I look forward to doing the next one in a couple of months, try to keep to a quarterly schedule, so, thanks to all that can attend.
Thank you. Mr. Tony.
Nothing this evening, Counsel.
Well, thank you. It falls to me to wish everybody a very happy St. Patrick's Day, probably should say it in the language that I grew up with. [speaking Spanish]. We will have a number of people coming in for this St. Patrick's Day celebration here in Michigan, the mayor of Cork is coming in to be with us, the Irish Ambassador of the United States is going to be here. So we're gonna have a lot of distinguished folks coming in to, as we say in Ireland, drown the shamrock. It's, it's on a, it's on a Friday, so be careful. And be safe. And so with that, on that happy note, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Councilwoman Stedman.
Support.
Support of Councilmember Gravlin. Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll?
Gravlin?
Yes.
Kadakel?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. The mayor's sixth council meeting is adjourned.
Here it starts on Friday, when does it end?